Hello, everyone. Welcome to the preview for the May 19th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting. I'm Town Manager Kevin Mizikar. I'm pleased to be joined by a group of town leaders today to walk through each and every warrant article to make sure town meeting members have adequate information making decision for our annual town meeting. Town meeting member packets will be mailed from the Town Hall on Friday, May 9th, 2025. All materials will be posted to the Town Meeting website, which is shrewsburyma.gov/townmeeting. All new Town Meeting members and members that may have procedural questions are encouraged to attend the pre-Town Meeting, which will be held on Thursday, May 15th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Oak Middle School. For all other Town Meeting members, we look forward to seeing you at 7:00 PM on May 19th for the Annual Town Meeting. If a second night is required, Town Meeting will continue Tuesday, and then if necessary, again on Wednesday, the 20th and 21st respectively. So we'll dive right into the warrant. I'll first be joined by the Assistant to the Town Manager Alexandra Martinez to review the first four warrant articles on the agenda for the Annual Town Meeting. Alex, can you please walk us through those first couple procedural articles to get Town Meeting started?
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Happy to. Article one is an annual article for Town Meeting to hear reports from town boards or committees that do not submit an annual town report. At Town Meeting, we anticipate hearing from the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee, which was established by the Select Board in May of 2024 to oversee the repair, renovation, and expansion of the Department of Public Works facilities at 207 to 211 South Street, in addition to the repair and renovation of the Richard D. Carney Municipal Building located at 100 Maple Avenue. Moving on to Article two, this is also another standing article, to appoint the trustees of the Wright and Harlow Charitable Trust Fund. The terms of the trust, which were established in 1882, require this action by Town Meeting each year. Article three is also a standing article that is brought forth each year to authorize the payment of any bills that were incurred in a prior fiscal year. This would apply to bills received late into the current fiscal year after fiscal year 2024 books were closed. At this time, there are no bills incurred in a prior fiscal year to be paid, however, this will be monitored as we near Town Meeting. Article four is another standing article to transfer any funds within the current fiscal year, which would be fiscal year 25. Town Meeting sets spending limits through personnel accounts and operating expense accounts, and spending levels are controlled at those two lines within every department. If a department doesn't have enough funding and personnel, and there are funds available in operating expenses, Town Meeting could authorize that transfer. We will review any necessary adjustments in the days leading up to Town Meeting, however, at this time, there are no anticipated transfers. Now, David Snowden, Assistant Town Manager of Administration and Finance, will walk us through the next few articles. Mr. Snowden, Article five is to fund the override stabilization fund. Can you tell us a little bit more about this article?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Martinez. This article and this fund was established after the override ballot question was approved May 2021. This year will be the first year that the Town, at the Annual Town Meeting, will not be depositing funds into this override stabilization fund unless in the fall, we have an opportunity to do such. The current balance of the override stabilization account as the end of March is $9,714,845. And these funds are reserved to, for future appropriations by Town Meeting to continue operations of municipal and education departments and prolonging the override stabilization fund as much as possible.
Thank you for that overview on Article five. Article six is one of, if not the most important financial articles that Town Meeting takes into consideration. Can you walk us through Article six?
Of course. This article seeks a total appropriation of $161,356,042 to fund the FY26 operating budget. The operating budget includes expenses for education, municipal budget, shared operating costs, and debt service. The funding for this article is raised from a number of sources, including taxation, sewer, water, stormwater, and retained earnings, and Selco expenditures for debt service projects. The FY25 operating budget is about 4.7% increase, or 7.3 million over FY25. The FY26 operating budget, I apologize. The total municipal operations, debt service, and certain expenses in support of school department make up approximately 44%, and the remainder is allocated to the school department, about 56%.
Thank you. Town Meeting members will also find an overview of the FY26 budget proposal on a department-by-department basis in their Town Meeting books that will be mailed out on May 9th. The next three articles, Articles seven, eight, and nine, are very similar. Mr. Snowden, can you walk us through these articles?
Of course, yes. All right. Articles seven, eight, nine, as you mentioned, are annually reoccurring items brought to Town Meeting, seeking to use funds to offset operating expenses and lower the overall tax burden and the tax rate. Across the three articles, three separate funding sources are identified, the Selco Cable Access TV Division, Selco Light Department, and then Certified Free Cash of the municipality. These funding amounts provided by Selco are identified in the franchise agreement and also include a pilot payment in support of, in lieu of taxes.
Thank you for that overview. Article six provided an overview on the municipal and school operating budgets, and the next few articles, Articles 10 through 13, are the operating budgets for the Town's four utility funds, solid waste, sewer, water, and stormwater. Can you walk us through those?
Of course, yes. The first one, Article 10, is for the Town's solid waste and recycling enterprise. This enterprise is supported by the tax levy as well, at about 50-50% split. The total appropriation will be 3.5 million, and departmental receipts will amount to about 1.8 million, with the remainder coming from the tax levy. All right, now we'll move on. Article 11 and Article 12, this would be our sewer special revenue fund and our water enterprise, both under the guidance of the Water and Sewer Superintendent. The sewer surplus account will have, what, 7.9 for their general operating expenses, 7.9 million. And the water department will be about 3.6 million for their operating expenses, and also include 85,000 from the retained earnings. The appropriations here are for the day-to-day operations and maintenance of the Town's drinking system and sewer system. These do not necessarily apply to the capital expenses, which we'll be reviewing a little bit later. In general, there are no major significant changes over FY26 budget, over FY25 budget for FY26. Article 13 is the operating budget for the Stormwater Enterprise, total appropriation of 1.08 million to be raised from departmental receipts. And again, there isn't any major or significant changes from the previous year in regards to the Stormwater Enterprise. All right. At this point in time, I'd like to connect back with Mr. Mizikar regarding Article 14, which seeks to designate funds for the cable television, public educational, and governmental access services. How much are these funds to be appropriated in FY26, and how are they derived and spent?
All right, thank you. So this year, we're looking to appropriate $388,836 for the operation of cable television, public educational, and government access services. These funds are raised through the collection of a franchise fee, which is assessed to all Selco television subscribers. The Town is in a very unique setting where although we've transitioned from the traditional cable environment on Selco's side, and no cable franchise fees actually do, but Selco is still providing the fees to the Town anytime someone subscribes to Selco stream to ensure that we can continue to provide meaningful public access through Shrewsbury Media Connection.
Excellent, thank you very much.
The next few articles are financial articles that Town Meeting also regularly considers at the Annual Town Meeting. Article 15 funds special expenses, out-of-pocket medical expenses of retired and disabled police officers and firefighters. Alex, can you talk a little bit more about the purpose of this article?
Sure. So as you mentioned, this article is brought forth to Town Meeting each year and seeks to appropriate out-of-pocket medical expenses for retired disabled police officers and firefighters in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 100B, which the Town adopted at the May 1976 Annual Town Meeting. For this year, there are $7,756 in medical expenses that are being sought for reimbursement, and that covers three individuals.
Alex, can you talk a little bit about Article 16, which proposes to add money to the Town's insurance trust account?
Yes, so this article proposes to add $20,000 to the insurance trust fund. This pays deductibles and other insurance obligations of the Town. The current balance of the trust fund is approximately $39,000 as of May 2025, so this $20,000 would bring that up close to about $60,000.
Great. The next couple of articles the Town Meeting will consider, request the appropriation of funds into a few stabilization accounts. Mr. Snow, would you mind starting by talking a little bit about how we use stabilization accounts and then tackle the first one, which is the general stabilization appropriation?
As you mentioned, there are a few different stabilization accounts within the Town. Earlier, we discussed Article five, which was the override stabilization account, and funds from that account are used to appropriate for the operating budget. The general stabilization account is the Town's rainy day fund in the event that there is some unforeseen financial challenges that should arise. It does require two-thirds vote of Town Meeting to take funds out of it. The Select Board has set a 5% of the annual operating budget as the policy level, and the Town has reached that level as of the end of last year. And the $300,000 appropriation in Article 17 will help maintain that 5% of the annual operating budget going forward.
Right, and Article 18 is associated with the sewer stabilization account. Can you talk a little bit about that appropriation?
So Article 18 and Article 19 are to fund two other stabilization accounts, sewer and water, and these act as the rainy day fund for those specific utilities. The sewer fund in Article 18 will seek $100,000 to be deposited into the sewer stabilization fund. There's currently about 1.8 million as of the end of March. In Article 19, there'll be another $100,000, and there's a current balance of about 800,000 in that fund at this time.
Great. So now we'll tackle Article 20. Alex will help describe what Article 20 is with regards to special accounts that are known as revolving accounts that the Town uses in its financial management scheme.
Thank you. So Article 20 establishes the annual maximum amount of funds that can be expended from the two revolving accounts that were authorized by Article 22 of the Shrewsbury General Bylaws in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half. The two revolving funds that the Town maintains are the Council on Aging Transportation Fund and the Donahue Rowing Center revolving fund. For FY26, the spending limits are as follows, $75,000 for this Council on Aging Transportation Fund, and $250,000 for the Donahue Rowing Center.
Article 21 is the acceptance of funding from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is provided through Chapter 90. Those funds are used for roadway improvement purposes. Alex, what is the amount that we anticipate to receive this year?
Chapter 90 funds are allocated by a formula based on the number of lane miles of public streets and ways, and it's currently estimated that the Town will receive $1,484,674 in Chapter 90 funds for FY26.
Great. Continuing to move through the warrant, Article 22 proposes the transfer of funds from the sale of cemetery lots.
This article will transfer $18,000 to the sale of cemetery lots account. Annually, the Town Meeting transfers funds from this account to offset the salary expenses associated with the operations of the cemetery. Additionally, the balance in the sale of cemetery lots account is approximately $74,000, and the balance in the Perpetual Care Trust Fund is approximately $1.6 million.
And Article 23 provides an opportunity for funding for lakes, ponds, and waterways that is maintained by the Town. Alex, I know this is a standing warrant article, but we seem to have sufficient funds that are in that account right now, and what is the proposal for Article 23 for the Town Meeting?
That is correct. So historically, this article has allocated about $35,000 in funding to fund weed control and other lake improvements activities on Lake Quinsigaman and other waterways in Town. At this time, we have sufficient funds in place from previous year's appropriations, and we were recommending that this article be defeated, and no funds are deposited.
Great. Article 24 is also a special appropriation article, seeking funding for youth and family counseling services within the community. Alex, what is the appropriation request, and how are those funds used?
This article proposes to allocate $350,000 to fund counseling and education services under contract with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. This is a, this article has historically, for the past couple of years, been supplemented with ARPA funds, and FY26 will be the first year that this funding strictly comes from Town Meeting appropriations. So I will now turn it over to Mr. Snowden to walk through the capital improvement plan articles for the general fund and the utility funds.
Excellent, thank you. Article 25 is the capital improvement plan for the general fund. This includes capital improvements across 10 nonutility Town Departments. The total appropriation for FY26 is $2,024,210 across police, fire, public buildings, and the COA and library as well.
Article 26, Dave, is a capital improvement plan for sewer, excuse me, for the sewer fund. What can you tell us about the plans for fiscal year 26?
This is fairly consistent with previous years. We're transferring funds from two separate sewer funds, 1.7 from the sewer surplus fund, and 300,000 from the inflow and infiltration fund. The infiltration fund receives permit fees on a regular basis, and then those fees go towards capital improvements going forward. There are a few main categories we're going to be funding. There is the sewer pump station improvements at 1.1 million. There is the capital improvement reserves at 100,000. Infiltration work, what, 450,000? And then ongoing I&amp;I work at 330,000? And then lastly, the ongoing vehicle replacement plan for the sewer enterprise at 100,000. The total amount is $2,080,000 for FY26.
Great. Next on the Town Meeting agenda is Article number 27, which is the capital improvement plan for Stormwater.
Yes. Total capital improvement plan for Stormwater in FY26 is going to be 500,000, and this is to capture ongoing drainage improvement works as part of the SEP management plan that the Town operates under.
Right, and then finally rounding out the capital improvement plan articles is the water system.
Excellent, yes. Want to remind Town Meeting that the Article 28 is the water capital improvement plan, $97,500, but this does not capture all of the capital improvements for the water department. Town Meeting approved a few years back a borrowing authorized capital plan wherein we've been borrowing about $12 million in total, $4 million at a time, to apply to capital projects. This here represents the ongoing vehicle replacement plan, and then the work to be done at Poor Brook Farm.
We're onto Article 29, which is a citizens petition article. This proposes to make changes to the Town's general bylaws. Mr. Mizikar, what specific changes are proposed by the petitioner?
Sure. The petitioners have set forth a change to the general bylaws that would prohibit the sale of single-use, non-carbonated, unflavored water in plastic bottles of a size under 1 liter in total volume. So there would, those bottles, less than a liter, would be prohibited from sale within the community if this article was approved. Again, this was brought forth through a citizens petition process.
Thank you.
So that takes us to Article 30, which is associated with a specific general law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, and has to do with a term called account tailings. Mr. Snowden, would you mind talking a little bit about the purpose of this article and what Town Meeting can expect?
Of course. This article is a result of the ongoing fiscal improvement that the Town conducts each year and our updated financial policies. Account tailings, under MGL, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, this allows the Town who may have checks that have been unclaimed or unclaimed property from uncashed checks on the books to close these out after a certain period of time and a number of opportunities wherein the Town has reached out to the recipient of the funds. This basically will remove the liability from the Town's tax bill after we follow a set procedure by the state.
That takes us to Article 31, which is designating the use of land, town-owned land along North Quinsigman Avenue. Mr. Bauding, can you talk a little bit about the purpose of this article?
Sure. This article proposes to designate approximately 4.8 acres of town-owned property located at 1058 North Quinsigman Ave., which is across the street from the Donahue Rowing Center, to the care, custody, and management and control of Shrewsbury Electric and Cable Operations, which is Selco. Selco is seeking to move their professional administrative and field operations staff and all their associated equipment and storage to this location with a new building. Selco would likely maintain a small customer service presence here in Town Hall, but they are working to move the majority of their staff to one location.
Moving on to Article 32, which seeks to establish a school building committee. Can you talk about the project and where we are in the process of considering a capital improvement?
Sure. This article represents a step in the MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority's process for the Town, as the Town prepares for a potential future invitation to participate in the grant program for the renovation and expansion of Shrewsbury High School. The article also proposes to transfer $35,000 in free cash to cover miscellaneous expenses associated with the work of the committee during the preliminary project phase. The committee will consist of nine members. It will be a member of the Select Board, a member of the School Committee, Town Manager, Superintendent of Schools, Public Buildings Division Manager, School Principal designated by a superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, and two residents-at-large appointed by the Select Board. This is an early step in this process that could take up to six years before we have a building project. Next, we have Chris McGoldrick, Director of Planning and Economic Development, joining us. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you.
So we have five CPA articles that we'd like you to go through for us. One is about the funding of CPA, and then the other four are the actual projects that CPA proposed to Town Meeting to fund.
Thank you. So Article 33 is the FY26 CPA budget article. This is done annually and seeks to appropriate funds from the CPA surcharge and the state match of those funds into the designated accounts, which provide Town Meeting and CPC the maximum amount of flexibility in using those funds for future projects. That formula is the 5% for administrative expenses, 10% for the three designated reserves, and the remaining 65% to the undesignated reserve account.
Next, you have Article 34, which is Arrowood Park Playground.
Yep, so Arrowood Park Playground, Article 34, seeks to appropriate 600,000 from the undesignated reserve in order to replace outdated playground equipment, as well as installing new safety surfacing at Arrowood Park. Some of that equipment has already been removed as part of an audit due to safety concerns. So this would refresh that existing park, and it has come with significant neighborhood support as well.
All right, next we have Article 35, which is the CPA project, which is the Shrewsbury Mortgage Index Ledger Book Restoration.
Yeah, so Article 35 seeks to appropriate $6,770 from the Historic Preservation Reserve in order to preserve nine of the Shrewsbury Mortgage Index Ledger Books, which date back to 1832. They're in need of repair, rebinding, and mold remediation in order to restore them to as close as original quality as possible and retain their usability through the years.
And then we have Article 36, which is Prospect Park ADA Accessibility Improvements. Talk about that a little bit?
Thank you. So Prospect Park ADA Accessibility seeks to install ADA accessibility ramps and pathways in the Prospect Park area, known as the Garden of Sweet Remembrance. It is for accessibility throughout the site, and is based upon the site study, which was done in 2024, and the recommendations from that study. After those upgrades are complete, the Friends of Prospect Park, who are the applicant on this project, seek to move forward with the installation of a memorial brick walkway utilizing their own funding.
Great. And then Article 37, the final project, this is local match for Jordan Pond and Malsus Trail Design. Can you explain a little bit about how that works and what the local match is?
Absolutely. So Article 37 seeks to appropriate 53,000 from the Open Space and Recreation Reserve account, which would provide that 20% local match to a Mass Trails grant, which would allow us to develop the current schematic design through to construction design plans, as well as conduct some preliminary site work. So the total project cost under this grant application is 500,000. We do anticipate from that preliminary project that was done through a Mass Trails, a previous Mass Trails grant, that this entire project would be near $2 million. Therefore, we do anticipate a multi-phase approach to this project in the future.
Great, thank you.
Chris, that takes us on to the two zoning bylaw adjustments that are being proposed at the May 19th Annual Town Meeting. The first is amending Section 2 of the definitions related to easements and frontage. What is the purpose of that article?
Thank you. So that article seeks to protect existing properties from takings by eminent domain, whether it's a road winding or otherwise, which would affect the calculation of frontage and setbacks of their property. So during those projects, if a Town project and a taking of that land would render it non-conforming, this removes that injury or that nonconformity from that property so that they're not harmed by that taking.
Great. And then finally, Article 39 amends the zoning bylaws with regards to accessory dwelling units. What is going on here?
Thank you. So this is a preliminary review that was conducted. It takes our existing accessory dwelling units bylaw, which is in the Town Center District, and moves it to a new section, aligning the existing language with the provisions of the Affordable Homes Act. So that is state law, which supersedes local zoning, but this will align our local regs with the provisions of that. We do anticipate a potential to review additional amendments at future Town Meetings.
Great, great. Thank you for your input on both the CPA articles and the two adjustments to the zoning bylaw, Chris.
Thank you.
That takes us up to Article 40, just a couple articles left for the Annual Town Meeting warrant. Article 40 starts a few amendments that are proposed for the general bylaws, starting with an amendment to Article 2, Section 10, which deals with how votes are cast at Town Meeting and procedures thereat. Happy to be joined by Assistant Town Manager Justin Dobson to talk about Article 40. Justin, what is being proposed through Article 40?
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. This article seeks to amend the general bylaws regarding the procedure for how Town Meeting is conducted. Currently, the general bylaws require that all first votes at Town Meeting be done by a voice vote. The proposed amendment allows for the use of electronic voting devices, which would be a clicker that you would press to signify whether you support or oppose an article in lieu of a voice vote.
Great. Then Article 41 is complementary to Article 40. What is the proposal? What is the proposal with regards to that article?
So Article 41 is to provide the funding for the purchase of the keypads identified in Article 40 to facilitate electronic voting. This article seeks to transfer 12,500 in free cash to fund the acquisition of the keypads and receivers. This also includes year-one cost of upgrades, remote technical support, and staff training via Zoom. The annual cost after year one will be $995 to cover those services.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
The next article, Article 42, is to also amend the general bylaw, and this is related to construction of utility poles and overhead wires. Mr. Mizikar, can you explain a little bit what this article is about?
Sure. Town Meeting members will be familiar because we had this exact article on the annual Town Meeting last year. Unfortunately, we had a procedural defect in a public hearing that was required, that was identified, so we had to start the process over again for this annual Town Meeting. The article itself seeks to codify an existing practice of Selco whereby all new construction of utility lines that, you know, would be overhead on utility poles will be required to be undergrounded in the future. This provides for both aesthetics and resiliency during times of storm, when it's storms, when it's really important, especially as we move towards more electrification of things within our homes and businesses. This will ensure a higher uptime of not only the electric service, but also fiber and broadband internet services within the community. So again, this is only applied to any new services or lines that are being installed throughout the community, so any existing lines would remain as they are indefinitely.
Okay, great.
And then Article 43, another amendment to general bylaw, is regarding maintenance of private roadways.
Sure. So this is the first time Town Meeting would see this article. It seeks to create a new section within the general bylaws that would enable us to make minor repairs and improvements to public ways within the town if they're deemed a public necessity. So this bylaw is permissible and would be through the, is permissible through Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 6N. Similarly, in 1959, the town adopted a part of Chapter 40, Section 6C, which allows us to maintain private ways for winter plowing and snow and ice operations. So again, these are minor repairs that we would take on, so more along the lines of potholes or slight grading rather than curb-to-curb paving or extensive maintenance of these ways. It really allows us to provide for continued public access for public safety vehicles and our plowing equipment when necessary. Takes away any significant hazards for those types of operations.
Terrific. And then final article, Article 44, is an amendment to the Wetlands Protection Bylaw. Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. Shrewsbury adopted its own Wetlands Protection Bylaw a little over a year ago, and this change actually seeks to make it easier and save applicants a significant amount of money on the requirement of notifying abutters while still complying with the rules and regulations outlined in the bylaw. Currently, residents are required to use certified mailing to each abutter, which costs about $9 per mailing, and this bylaw amendment would allow for just certified mail instead of, instead of having to have, sorry, registered mail instead of certified mail. So that costs about $2. So this is really, again, trying to make it more consistent and easier for applicants to overcome what has become a financial challenge when this bylaw was recently originally developed. So that takes us through all 44 articles that are proposed for the annual Town Meeting, again, which will start on Monday, May 19th, at Oak Middle School at 7:00 PM. I want to remind residents of a couple dates that will, important dates prior to the annual Town Meeting. May 9th, 2025, town staff will mail Town Meeting packets out to all Town Meeting members. On May 15th, 2025, pre-Town Meeting will be held at the Oak Middle School at 7:00 PM. We encourage any recently re-elected or newly-elected Town Meeting members to engage with the Town Clerk's Office to be sworn in in advance of Town Meeting, preferably no later than May 15th at the pre-Town Meeting, when you could be sworn in there. And then, of course, on May 19th, Town Meeting will begin at 7:00 PM, and if necessary, would be continued to Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. We thank you for taking the opportunity to hear a summary of the 44 warrant articles that are proposed for the annual Town Meeting. Town staff stands ready to answer any questions you may have in advance of that meeting. All materials can be accessed through the town website at shrewsburyma.gov/tommeeting. You can reach the Town Manager's Office at manager@shrewsburyma.gov, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. We look forward to seeing you on May 19th, 2025, at the annual Town Meeting. Thanks for watching.